Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call the February 13th, 2024 Planning Commission Regular Meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom, online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the "Live Meetings" link at the bottom of the city's homepage, or on the city's YouTube channel. If you're attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest-to-real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next is roll call. Staff, will you please call roll? Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Mayer?
Here.
Commissioner Yodowicz?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Vice Chair Tagney?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here.
All present. We're joined this evening by Community Development Director David Loyah and Senior Planner Joe Matier. Next, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the "Raise Hand" icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing *9 on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Fred Wise with ArcataOne.com. The 1,990-page draft environmental impact report is now available. As I told the City Council, I am appalled by the general sloppiness, the errors, the omissions, the lack of cohesiveness, and actual misstatement of facts that are in this document. If it were me, I would recall it, repair it, and release it for a new 45-day public comment period. To me, it's a question of whether you want to do the right thing or just minimally comply with sequel requirements. As some examples, this draft EIR has a table of contents with 40 entries. This is entirely insufficient. By contrast, your general plan, which is 295 pages, has 151 items in the table of contents. So the draft EIR table of contents is essentially useless. I've made an annotated extended table of contents for the AR that has over 700 entries. It's available on arcataone.com/pc. It enables you to scan it and see exactly what's in the draft EIR and find things that you're looking for. In this draft EIR, the environmental analysis and historic resource analysis cover only the Gateway area; they don't cover the entire city. The noise study is based on data that was collected 27 years ago and never updated. The noise study shows excess traffic noise in parts of Arcata, but it does not make any conclusions. The suggested mitigation is, and I am quoting, "Central air conditioning systems will be required to allow occupants to close their windows to achieve acceptable indoor noise levels," end quote. That is on page 1,949 of a 1,900-page document. The new draft gateway code, form-based code, is also here. We're not supplied with track changes on this. I've evaluated. It appears there is absolutely no change from the September 2023 version. Same typos are there. The same odd Greenway map is there. There are no improved graphics, and very importantly, there is no mention of the L Street linear park. There is one big addition: We have 3D images of a potential build-out of the Gateway area. We've been waiting two years for this. It's available on arcataone.com/pc. There's also pages from the draft EIR that show a 3D image of the Gateway area that is absolutely ridiculous. It's an illustrative plan. It shows 1,500 dwelling units, and you'll be happy to hear 2,625 parking spaces in the Gateway area. In other words, it's useless. Thanks very much. There's more for this three minutes. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Fred. And Chair, just as a point of order, it appears that that comment may have been related to an item on the agenda, if you wish to allow those, just pointing it out. Thank you. Gregory?
Okay.
Welcome.
For the last two years, I have been communicating with, well, not all of you because you weren't here two years ago, but about the noise element in the City of Arcata from the standpoint of no action whatsoever with vehicles that go out of their way to make themselves as loud as possible, setting off alarms in neighborhoods all hours of night, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 a.m. in the morning. And what has the city done with all these letters that I've written to you? I got promises like early on in the scoping period that we were actually going to do a noise study so that you could tell me I'm wrong, but you didn't do that because you basically promised it, but, you know, then it was like, well, Plan West isn't going to allow this. So I go over to Plan West, and they say, what are they talking about? They're the ones that tell us what to do. So I'm just adding on a little bit that the last time you did a noise study was 1997, which you don't even have any data on exactly what was going on on primary streets such as H Street. So, I mean, what is the problem with the city that the most basic thing they can't even do? It's like, I addressed a lot of the questions, and nothing is being answered. Nothing is being done. There's no effort whatsoever. I mean, apparently, you can spend quite a bit of money, I'm not saying you guys, on all these banners for Cal Poly that wasn't paid by Cal Poly, but it was paid for the city. I think it was up, I mean, Fred was there, I was in that meeting. $40,000 are going to paint the intersections where basically, I think we have the worst in the state as far as people being hit by cars and on bicycles, and you're going to actually paint the intersections a color that doesn't stand out. I mean, it's just like shocking how there's all this data. I mean, I've been reading quite a bit of it in the New York Times about why does, why does the U.S. stand out of all the Western nations, Europe, Canada, Australia? Why are so many people dying or being hit by cars? And it's like, it's like silence from the city. It's like, I send this stuff out to you. I've given up sending it out to you because there's no results whatsoever. It's just like talking to, I don't know, it's like I'm the sweeter, kinder version of Mother Russia or something. You don't throw us into jail, but it's like, you actually do nothing. It's like just, I don't even think you really want to hear from the public to tell you the truth, but that's my example of one thing from the EIR that was a total failure. And, you know, I'd like for someone to explain why you don't think you need to do that. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Do we have any commenters waiting online, David? We don't. Okay. Thank you for your comments. We, as always, appreciate your participation and input. We will now move to Item 3, which is our Consent Calendar. The Commission considers all items on the Consent Calendar routine and enacts them in one motion. Commissioners or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. The only item on our Consent Calendar is Item A, Approved Planning Commission Minutes from our regular meeting, January 23rd, 2024. Do any planning commissioners wish to pull the consent item, or does anyone else wish to pull the item? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
I move to approve the Consent Calendar.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to consider a design review permit at 887 and 893 H Street for proposed scissor gates. Prior to opening this public hearing, I understand that we do have some ex parte disclosures and other comments Commissioners may wish to make. Who would like to go first? Go ahead, Joel.
I have a business and a residence approximately 500 feet from the subject property of this application, and although I don't think of a legally cognizable conflict of interest, I think the prudent course and the most conservative course would be for me to recuse myself from this matter.
Okay. Thanks, Joel. You can head back with Dylan, and we will let you know when we're done so you can rejoin us. Peter, go ahead.
I would like to report ex parte communications. I talked with Vice Chair Dan Tagney about this issue and got his opinion as a longtime Commissioner about how this would affect the city. And I also talked to Alex Stoman, the owner of the building, to get her view of this issue and to understand her role as the owner and the landlord for that business there. So, that's it.
Okay. Appreciate that. Peter, is there anyone else who has any ex parte comments or to share for this item? Seeing none, then thank you. We will begin with a staff report, please.
Good evening. My name is Joe Matier, Senior Planner with the City of Arcata, Community Development Department. I am the signed planner for this project that we have before you this evening. It is a design review project because of the, there is an exterior alteration to a property that's located in the Arcata Plaza Historic District. Before you, the staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider the design review approval. There is an action that you'll find that is a part of Attachment A. It has findings. The action includes the findings of approval, Exhibit A, I mean Exhibit 1 of Attachment A, and also the conditions of approval. And the recommendations would be based on the application material that you'll find in Exhibit 3. The project is located in this, the southwest corner of the intersection of 9th Street and H. The plaza is here, of course, in green, and then the Arcata Plaza Historic District is a nine-block radius centered around the plaza here. So again, the project site here, the Arcata Plaza Historic District is required here. Is here. Design review is required for two reasons. One is under the Historic Preservation Policies of the Land Use Code, and then also Design Review Code sections as well. So those are cited in your staff report. Here's another version. This is out of the general plan that also recognized the importance of the Arcata Plaza as a historic district. Here's the nine-block, a different representation of the nine-block radius around the plaza here. What is included is this red bar along here, and this is based on kind of just a survey of the properties that front public streets that have either a recessed or covered entryway. And within this nine-block area, there are 92 that may qualify as being recessed or covered entryway. This is an example of 2018 facade, a street view that's available on Google Maps. It shows the building subject property here. This is the recessed entryway here. It's about 12 feet across, 6 feet deep, and 9 feet high. It was developed in around 2002. It contains one commercial space down here, retail, and then there's an apartment, residential apartment above. The downstairs floor was originally designed as two different tenant spaces, commercial tenant spaces. That's why you do see the two different addresses there. And at one time, they were occupied by two separate businesses. So there'll be a door to the entrance on the left here for this space, and then a door on the right for this space. Currently, we have one tenant that only uses this door here on the right. So this door is functional, but it is blocked off on the inside, is not functional. This is an example of kind of the existing conditions. It's a rendition prepared by the designer for this. It shows with the scissor gate during open hours, so the scissor gate is collapsed to the either side, and here it can swivel on the top and bottom, and it can either swivel out towards the sidewalk or in towards the alcove. In this case, there's a condition of approval that's recommended by staff based on discussions with the engineer that we want to make sure that that is, when the building is occupied, that, or this space, tenant space is occupied, that this gate remains open. It swings to the interior of the alcove and that it's locked in position. So both sides of these will then, on this side, will be collapsed, turned towards the door, and then locked, and the same will happen on this side. The profile, when it's in the collapsed position, is about, just under a foot, maybe about 10, 11 inches, and, you know, we don't want that to swing towards, out into the sidewalk area where that would become obstruction to the pedestrians along that sidewalk. This is the scissor gate in the closed position. It's proposed to be about eight feet, or I think you're nine feet. Yeah, I can't read that now, but I believe it's eight feet, and the alcove is nine feet high. And so there is a kind of rollers. They will kind of roll along here, and then there'll be a lock right there. It's a black painted scissor gate. There is some application material that, kind of the design specs that were included in your packet, staff report, under Exhibit 3 of Attachment A, that included some of the cut sheets for the item here. So the scissor gates will be here in the, when the business is closed, the scissor gates will be expanded and enclose this entire area here. It'll be flush. There'll be no portions of that scissor gate that encroach into the public right-of-way or the sidewalk there. The findings of approval are the general plan compliance and Land Use Code compliance, and it's as determined by the Planning Commission. Staff realize the situation that the business owner, as many business owners and public members have, the City of Arcata, public places also deal with the consequences of our community not being able to take care of our unhoused community members, and they seek shelter in places where they find it safe to be. And a recessed entryway is considered a project enhancement, as identified in the findings of the staff, the action. For the central commercial area, it was one of 15 project enhancements that were encouraged to promote kind of inviting, consistent architectural style to support the very important Arcata Plaza Historic District. There has been a lot of commerce, a lot of public activities associated with that for generations, and the general plan and land use policies kind of reflect that through the designation of that historic district. What the property owners and even our staff at the city have in cleaning up disrespectful people, our community members and stuff like that, is atrocious. There's no really anything other than that. It's a sad state, and, you know, I believe that this is a balance that is before the Planning Commission in trying to balance the individual needs of the business owner, their staff, maintaining that they have a safe place to work, and make sure that it is an inviting community. The commerce that's generated through the Arcata Plaza area is, you know, the top tax generation in the area. It's very important for not only the commerce, the employment opportunities, but also the civic public events that we have at the plaza itself. The general plan and the Land Use Code do not have any standards for how we address security in the area, such as scissor gates and designs and things like that. Within this area here, there is a, a business, a number of years ago, it's probably close to eight years ago, did put a scissor-style gate, it's not really a gate, but in the window to protect the smash-and-grab effect that is, sometimes occurs in our communities. And there is another scissor gate that was installed in a recessed entryway further north on H Street. They did obtain a building permit there. They did not obtain design review before the Planning Commission, that should have been required. That was a staff error in that. We assumed that it was outside of the, we didn't realize that the Arcata Plaza Historic District had that strict protocol for any of these alterations and that that would have triggered design review for the Planning Commission. So, you know, staff is a little bit concerned about the precedent. It's going to set towards the, you know, it's speculative to, you know, to really see what the effect of this is going to be. There's, you know, what is the solution and answer? There's a lot of problems out there, and this addresses the immediate need to protect that space from being impacted by disrespectful community members that don't respect that space and what the property owner and business owner and their staff and community members is, just somebody walking by, what they see. This business is not unusual to any other ones that we see in our community. The Valley West area, different parts of towns are affected by it. Other communities in our county are affected by that statewide, national-wise. It's, you know, kind of a, really a sad state of affair where humanity is not taking care of those unhoused people and finding really what they need, if it's drug addiction or social things. What we have before you is a design review, and does this project meet the findings as required through the design review policies established in the Land Use Code and the general plan? And so we've tried to create that findings of approval that would allow the Planning Commission to review and understand. If you decide that the scissor gate is the design that you can support, you could just make a motion to approve, and we would do all the affirmative, yes, it does, it is compatible, that type of thing, or you could go through item by item if you want. There is one condition of approval that we did add, and that is to address kind of the concerns of the fire department and the building officials to make sure that, one, that the gate, when it's in the open position, is turned inside so it doesn't encroach out into the public right-of-way, and that it's locked as well. We want to ensure that anybody inside the building, once it's occupied, any staff or public members inside the building, that that gate is open, just in case there's an emergency, they try to get out and they're not trapped behind that, behind that security gate there itself. I did want to point out with the environmental findings, the staff, the staff report does recommend that the Planning Commission consider the categorical exemption Class 1 for existing facilities. There are some parameters where categorical exemption could not be used, and so the staff report does include some discussion about that. We find that it's kind of speculative to determine, is there going to be a cumulative impact on the historic district if we see a continuation, if the 92 buildings decide to put in roll-up doors, scissor gates in the windows, start blockading, you know, with plywood construction, let's say, you know, and windows and stuff like that. So we could see some impact on that. We think that, you know, our recommendation is to support the, if the Planning Commission wishes to, to support the environmental exemption there as being exempt from California Environmental Quality Act. And I would be happy to answer any questions the Planning Commission may have, and I'll turn it over to the Director. It looks like he has some things to, closing statements?
Yeah. Thank you, Joe. That was a good staff report that outlined the issues. I just wanted to reinforce the idea that this is a business that's been on the plaza since early 2000s. This is an issue that's been growing, and certainly over the last couple of years has really, you know, become a significant challenge for many of the businesses. And at the same time, you know, the county, the region as a whole, has been really attempting to, trying to address that problem with the same, you know, level of resources that are needed. It does feel at times intractable, but we know that it hasn't been this bad in the past, and, you know, my hope is that in the future, we can, you know, address the concern of our unhoused community members. And so to that point, you know, with this longstanding business on our plaza, you know, I wanted to point out these scissor gates, you know, are a response to a challenge that has been exacerbated in the near term, and that those scissor gates are, you know, temporary in nature. It doesn't permanently affect the design of the building. And so I don't envy you. You have a very difficult decision and lots of things to weigh and compare and contrast when you're making this decision, but when you're making that discussion and the decision tonight, you know, I do want you to consider that, you know, these scissor gates are not going up, you know, without thought on the part of the business owner, and that I'm, you know, I won't speak for them. I'll allow them to speak to the issues that they're dealing with, but that, you know, they're seeing this as sort of a last-ditch effort. Thank you.
I had a quick question, and then I would like to hear any other questions from Commissioners before we open public comment. Joe, you were talking about the categorical exemption, and you were also talking about, I suppose, what you might call a slippery slope of one scissor gate leading to a profusion of scissor gates. Is that question of the potential profusion of other security gates connected to the categorical exemption, or those are separate issues altogether? And that's the first part. And the second part is just what was staff's view on setting a precedent by allowing these gates?
So the, the concern about, I'll address this in reverse order, the concern about the precedent. Each design review is an independent decision, and certainly the, you know, the discretion that you apply, you know, is done on a case-by-case basis. Having said that, you know, I do think it becomes a little bit more difficult to tell the neighbor, no, you can't have a scissor gate when you've just approved one on the other property if the conditions are really the same. In terms of the categorical exemption, I think we wanted to identify that the concern that there would be a cumulative impact to historic resources through the proliferation of scissor gates is speculative at this time. We don't, we are not making that claim, and that if we were making that claim, the categorical exclusion, you wouldn't be able to adopt that because you can't adopt them if you know that you're having an impact.
Got it. Thank you. Questions from other Commissioners about the staff report before public comment? Dan?
Yeah, Joe, do you mind telling us which business north of this has a scissor gate? Which alcove? Which alcove?
Yes, it's this one here. There's a series of businesses, I believe it's a haberdashery right now. It was a portion of the Daisy Dry Goods, I think, was the previous business there.
Thanks.
And then the, there's a next to, I think it's, this business here is where there is a window scissor security. I think it's a tobacco shop or something like that.
Right next to the alley, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
David and Joe, I, it seems to me that we're, if we approve this, we're obviously setting a precedent. I mean, if we have proven on the plaza, it'll be approved anywhere in the city. It seems you need to consider that in whether there's a categorical exemption or not. No?
No, I don't think that for the purposes of this project, you have to evaluate that for a categorical exemption. Those are speculations. We have no knowledge that there's, or evidence that there's a, you know, pending proliferation of scissor gates. I think it's a reasonable assumption that if you've made the findings for one project and another project comes forward that has a similar set of circumstances, that you would probably be making the same set of findings. But there's nothing in the record currently that suggests that that's going to happen. We don't have a slew of pending applications waiting for this decision to be made. And so there's no way for us to say that there's definitively a cumulative effect associated with that. And I understand that it seems reasonable, but that's not the standard for CEQA, and so we can't, can't make that assumption for CEQA.
Go ahead, Judith.
Hi, thanks very much. I really appreciate the map that you included of the other locations for covered entryways in the historic district. And what I wanted to ask, sort of pinned onto that cumulative impact type of thing, this particular building is not a historic structure, even though it's in a historic district. In the draft findings that you gave us, if the application had been for a historic building, is there anything that would have been different in the draft findings? And I realize it's not this particular case, but, you know, in this, in this case, it is, it's not a historic structure, but many of those others on your map probably are. So...
I appreciate the question, Commissioner Merritt, but I believe it'd be a little bit difficult to speculate on, depending what the context of the, of the project is with the relationship of the historic resources and the integrity of that and how that would affect that.
Other questions? Okay. We will open the public comment period. The applicant will have the first opportunity to speak, to present their project. As per usual, the applicant's presentation will not be timed. After the applicant, members of the public will each have up to three minutes to provide comments on the project. The applicant will have an opportunity to respond to public comments at the end. If you are in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern after the applicant's presentation. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Feel free to state your name for the record. I would now like to invite the applicant to speak on this project.
My name is Kelly Carlin. I'm here to talk to you about, as you know, obviously, the gate proposal for Caravan of Dreams at 893 H Street. I would like to start tonight with showing you some pictures of what store owners have to deal with upon coming to work. How do I do that? Oh, they're going up there, okay. I just want you to just click through them and let these, let them just take a look. She deals with a lot almost every day. Unknown things of liquids, we don't know what they are exactly, I mean. People have a tendency to set up there. As soon as the store closes, it'll be light out and they'll set up there like to find, because it is one of the, in my opinion, one of the better spots to set up. So they kind of like, somebody's waiting, as soon as that door shuts, people are there. It's, I mean, at four o'clock in the afternoon, I've seen it happen. All right, thank you, Joe. All right. The Arcata Plaza has always been an important focal point to locals and tourists alike. When people come to town, where do they go? They go to the plaza. Over the last 10 years, the dynamics downtown has changed. I know many, many people who will not come to the plaza and shop because of it. I'm sure all of you know people who say the same thing. The plaza has always been a central shopping area, and the city depends on the sales tax to balance its budget. This is an important relationship between the city and its businesses. Health and safety issue of the store owners and their employees need to be foremost in our minds. Every day they come to work and have to clean up feces, vomit, other unknown debris. Vomit is considered a biohazard fluid because it can carry hazardous pathogens that can rapidly contaminate surfaces and the air. Common diseases and transmitted are like salaminilla, hep A, hep B, plus many others. Nobody wants to come dressed for work and do this. It is dangerous. In addition to cleaning up, our business people are met with people sleeping in their doorways and have been verbally accosted. I, I am personally worried that one day waking up somebody could turn into a violent situation for a store employee. Recess entries were enhancement to facades, allowing customers to easily enter commercial spaces and bring in nice aesthetics. Now they are a problem. The proposal for this black scissor gate, which is easily installed and easily removed, when opened, there will be locked in position with an approximately three inches of gate visible from the street. The gate will be closed and locked during non-business hours. Scissors gates are considered reversible, which is a term used in historic preservation, when an item can be removed later and not affect the building's integrity. The gates are not permanent additions to the building. And thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thanks for your time.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Anderson, and I own Caravan of Dreams, the business where we are asking for a permit to install a scissors gate across our recessed entry. I have been in this location for 21 years, during which time I have seen a steady increase in problems relating to homelessness and an exponential rise in the last few years of what I must describe as uncivilized behavior. In the last two years, I and my employees have arrived at the store to find, along with trash and debris, the following: human feces in the planter, a feces and urine-soaked sleeping bag and blanket. Four hours later, environmental services arrived to remove that. Vomit, gobs of spittle, unidentifiable fluids in cans and bottles in our entryway, a man sleeping so deeply, I thought he was dead. This last happened at 10:45 on a Saturday morning. Police assistance was required to move him. I cannot be at my store at night. A police no trespassing order is only marginally effective. The trash and bodily excretions must be removed to prevent them from being tracked into the store and creating a further hazard. My employees' health and safety is at risk in these situations, never mind the impact on my business. I understand your concern that a gate might not be optimal from a design standpoint, but you cannot allow aesthetics to take precedence over health and safety, not only of my staff but of the general public. And we find it hard to believe that residents and visitors would find trash and vomit more attractive than a gate. We have considered many design options, but the scissor gate is the least, the least obtrusive when open and easiest to secure and protect our entrance when closed. I hope you will approve it so that we can move forward and be spared further dangerous scenarios. I would also like to add that our entryway, which is six feet deep and nine, I think, 12 feet wide, is particularly attractive. I don't know why. It must be cozy in there. And sometimes people set up before we have even left the building. The lights are out, they figure we're gone, and they set up, and I have to push on the door, say, excuse me, could I leave? It's a lot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
Hi, my name's Amy Fowler. I am the owner of Humboldt Haberdashery, which is just outside that purple line on your map. It is a 100-year-old building, and it is the one with the scissor gate. Mary Anderson, Daisy Dry Goods, is my landlord. She's historically, I apologize for speaking fast, I got three minutes, has had problems with that historically. I agree with everything they've said, everything they've been through, I have been through, and I can add some more details than that. I'd also like to add, I am advocate for, for the unhoused. I consider some of them friends. There, when I moved in that space, Mary told me there were some you could trust to watch your space, and there are. Those don't outweigh the people that take advantage of the situation, though. I've had, within the first month of me moving in, I had a gun pulled on me by waking somebody up. So the danger factor of waking people up, you don't know, is extreme. My process to deal with that was I had cameras set up, and I had my monthly letter, you had to turn in to the cops, and I would watch my cameras before I drove from McKinleyville every morning to see who was sleeping in my doorway, if I knew them or not. If I didn't know them, then I'd have to call the cops. This was two, three times a week. Dispatcher knew who I was for sure. None of my name knew my business. It was going on for weeks like this, multiple days a week, to go have them, move them on because I didn't feel safe doing this anymore. Literally building whole forts, which she said, like, I teach nighttime classes. I would have to have even the guys that I care about, because I wanted that space so bad, be like, look, hang out over there, 10 feet away, man, because I got people coming out of my store at 8:00 at night. It's not safe. My gates are removable, it's four by four posts. I had huge concerns about public opinion for my business from my neighbors, my community, these people, you know? And not only did the installers say they never had a single negative comment, I have never had a single negative comment. In fact, I've had just the opposite. I've had multiple positive comments about saying, thank you for doing this, thank you for keeping this space clean. I don't have to clean up trash now. I don't have to call up police resources anymore. The amount of excrement is probably 90% less than what I was having to deal with, having to figure out how to deal with environmental services, because it's not fair. The ambassadors, I will say, the ambassadors came in about two months after I opened, made a huge difference, but it's not right what gets put on them and all these people that are doing police jobs and environmental jobs like that, and what they do to stand up for a lot of our businesses that are female-owned, minority-owned, and run by a single person all day long. You know, if I didn't have those ambassadors here just for that program to back me up when people came in my store that I was uncomfortable with, it would be a whole nother thing. You need our tax base. There's multiple, there were 12 closers last year at the start of the year. We're trying to roll over, we're trying to fight right now. You know, it is really hard. Even the liquor stores down 30, 50%, you know? We need the support like this. I hate that this is what this has come to you, but my personal security and my benefits, and even the people that had stayed there in my space, understand why I did this, and I've never had a single negative word from anyone in the community about it.
Thank you for your comments.
As someone for the last couple of years that have walked around in the evening throughout the plaza and all over the city, I understand what these folks are going through, and I support their motion to have a scissor gate. But there's going to be a problem from the standpoint, they'll solve their problem, and these, these folks are going to go to the next space, you know, and then the next store owner is going to have to face it. So it seems like if you're going to approve this, then you should just basically approve everyone because it's not going to be fair to the rest of them not to be able to protect their property in the same way that the descriptions that are, that are happening tonight. And, I mean, it is pretty shocking, and I'd also say that I read an article that the city of Eureka and I think McKinleyville, but I think Eureka got an award for this, but there seems to be grant money available, and I heard that Arcata had not applied for it. But there's, there's grant money to also deal with the homeless on the plaza, so I would highly recommend you look into that because, you know, the gates are just basically, you know, forcing it down to the next, the next business, and it's not really quite solving the problem, but, you know, it, it seems to be quite a process for someone to come here and get permission to do, do that. My guess is that the reason why you don't have more businesses coming in front of you is just, they seem to be, a lot of them limping along, barely surviving, and maybe they don't even have the resources to, or the knowledge to go through the process. So I'm just giving you like more of a broad standpoint of what I see, you know, because I walk almost every evening of what's happening. So that's what's, that's what's going to happen. So I'm a little surprised, too, that something like this has to go through this process because we've been spending a whole year, you know, basically saying, we're gonna make, we're not going to have the planning commission involved when we're developing a whole city block, and you won't have any comments on that. But it seems kind of like a little petty that you have to come in and, and deal with, you know, somebody wanting to put a gate up. I would also note, you know, a great place for homeless to hang out on the plaza that doesn't seem to have attraction is Cal Poly's store. And I'll give you a little insight probably why they're not hanging out there, because you can almost see on the hour that someone from the campus is driving over either the police or non-police vehicles from the campus to check out their property to make sure there's no homeless at all at Cal Poly's properties. So I guess if you have the money and the resources, you can keep them away.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, everyone. My name is Colleen Hole, and I'm here representing Arcade Artisans Cooperative, which is right next door to Nancy's place. And amongst us, we have 24 artists that are part of this cooperative, and we work four or five days a month, so each of us is not impacted as incredibly, as heavily as Nancy's place or other places, and I grant that. We've talked about putting planters, we've talked about spikes coming up out of the ground at night, I mean, we, you know, all these really ridiculous ways to, to handle the issue of having people sleeping in front of your door, leaving whatever they leave on a regular basis every day when you come to work. So, on my little napkin that I wrote down here, I've talked, I think about the aesthetics of having a gated, literal gated communities where we have stores that are jailed because of the people that are on the plaza and misbehaving. I don't know what can be done about that. Obviously, people have been trying for a long time, nothing's been very effective. The responsibility of the city of Arcata and APD, their responsibility for the protection of life and property, and I believe that this falls under their purview, is to protecting property, because one of these days, all these windows are going to get smashed because somebody's going to be upset because there's a gate in front of where they want to sleep. I don't know what the repercussions are going to be, but I don't, I don't think they're going to be lovely. Financially, it's already been spoken about. The plaza is absolutely the monetary generator of taxes for this wonderful The plaza is absolutely the monetary generator of taxes for this wonderful town, and to have them leave, which they've had to, COVID, of course, had a huge impact, and then we had to close some bars because of their impact. And now it's places where, as everyone has said, everyone has seen, I don't want to go there because there's somebody yelling profanities out on the plaza that nobody stops. I can hear them in the store with music on, they're across the plaza, and they're just, you know, it's just an F-bomb party. It's really rather crazy. So the financial impact is there, the aesthetics, the responsibilities. My personal proposal is to have the city of Arcata hire a steam cleaning company that would come through, alert anyone at, let's say, 6 or 7 o'clock in the morning, give them 10 minutes before someone comes through, and we wash the sidewalks and take care and steam clean all those areas every day, every other day, to make it a very unpleasant place to try to sleep. I don't know where else these people are going to go, I have no answer to that. If I did, I'd be a millionaire, because everybody would love me. So that's what I have to say. I think the aesthetics, responsibilities, financial, and my proposal are valid. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Can I try? That would be really quick.
No, sorry. Does anyone else here in chambers want to make comments on this item? Do we have anyone waiting online, David? Okay. Well, I'd like to thank everyone for coming and participating. Appreciate everybody's comments here. I'd like to bring this discussion back to the commission. Does anyone wish to ask questions, statements? Go ahead, Peter.
I have a question for the owners. You said the gate would be open during store hours and closed otherwise. Is that right? So I'm trying to ascertain the hours, the gate would be open and closed?
Well, the gate would be
Yeah.
...open and fixed in place during business hours, and the gate would be up as soon as they close.
So, for example, are you open on Sunday?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, if, I'm wondering if there are events on the plaza when you're closed? Could the gate be open then?
Why?
Why?
Of course it could be. Stores are open at that time, sure, there's a possibility for that.
Because it looks better? It's more inviting?
At night? Can the doors be closed?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to offer that the viewing public and the record can't understand what's being said, and so if you have questions of specific people, maybe ask them to come and speak in the mic so they can hear both sides of the conversation.
Okay. I'm just imagining times when the store is closed and it would be good for the gate to be open. I understand that you need the gate closed, but I think there would be public times when it would be more inviting to have the gate open.
She said she's open seven days a week, and if you don't close the gate when you leave your business, they are going, I don't care if there's an event going on or not, they are going to set up there, and that is one of the first places they set up is, well, it used to be Hattie Dashery and there, they're very deep, and they're facing the right direction for the prevailing winds and the rains, so the weather doesn't get to those people as much as, like, if you're on the other side of the plaza, it is not protected from rain as much as these spaces are, plus they're very deep spaces compared to a lot of these other, yes, there's 92 spaces, but there's not 92 spaces people can sleep in. A lot of those spaces are very small, just for a door going upstairs above, let's say, like Plaza or somewhere like that, there's a couple small doors along there, and so that side, you don't see people sleeping on as much because of the weather, and there's, I mean, the plaza is another deep space that they do sleep at, too, but...
Thank you. Go ahead, Abby.
Yes, this was initially, well, it is a difficult decision, but looking, one of the first things I did was look up their operating hours, and I felt good about the fact that they're open seven days a week. Granted, you know, six hours here, you know, seven hours there, but then you look at a place like Outer Space, which is a nonprofit art space, it's just down the street, they also have a deep space, it's not super flat, maybe it's not the best place to spend the night, but they're only open during certain events, so the Secordian gate we're talking about is going to be there a majority of the week. So I do think that this decision to maybe approve the Secordian gate doesn't mean that every place that requests the Secordian gate is going to have to have it, too. I think it is about operating hours. And so I do just want to note that they're open seven days a week, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. or 5:00 p.m., and I think we should take that into consideration. And, yeah, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention if you didn't know what their operating hours were.
Thanks, Abby.
I'd like to reflect on that same point.
Go ahead, Dan.
I think it's an excellent one, I think it's similar to what Peter is bringing up. If this does happen to, you know, many entryways around the plaza, which we all can see the benefit to these scissor gates, and yes, people will move down to the next alcove, I agree with that, although those are the two best, I totally agree with those. If stores, you know, what you brought up, the outer space, is a perfect one. If these gates are just closed most of the time, that affects stores right next door, for sure. I mean, this is a design review issue that affects the neighborhood, not just the store. I get that they fold back during business hours, that's great. So there are conditions, there's things that we could perhaps consider layering into this. This store being open seven days a week really helps. The evening, I would rather walk, I think, by a scissor gate than walk by some of the parties and messes that I've walked by over the years downtown. So I get that the evening thing, the scissor gate, is probably better than what happens in those alcoves, but if it's during the day, it could be Saturday, and, you know, some stores aren't open on Saturday, and you're walking past two or three closed scissor gates just to get to the one store, it sets a bad vibe, you know? It doesn't feel like a very nice plaza. So if we could store around something that staff supports, that we, you know, that's realistic to property owners, I don't know what that means for who owns the building that the outer space is. Do they have to come down and unlock it even though there's no business open that day? I don't know. I don't know how that plays out, but I am uncomfortable with thinking about scissor gates being open during daylight hours and affecting the whole neighborhood.
Thanks, Dan. Judith?
I'm listening on this one because I'm seeing both sides of it, and I think, for me, the bottom line is, we have a humanitarian tragedy of homelessness in our community, but I also don't see that the individual workers and property owners of businesses on the plaza should be required to put themselves at risk in order to address it. One of the things that is important to me, if we are acknowledging that approving one scissor gate will probably lead to applications for other scissor gates, is to actually consider, not tonight, but on a different day, perhaps adopting standards for those entryway enclosures into our design code for the plaza at some point in the future. Many, many cities with historic downtown areas and homelessness concerns have done exactly that. There are excellent guidelines from organizations aiming at historic preservation and considering humanitarian concerns as well. In this particular case, there is a condition of approval that also allows, in the draft conditions of approval, for staff to approve minor modifications of the project. I would assume that, in this case, in this relatively new building that's only 22 years old, if the owner who took such care with every minute detail of design should at some future time decide that a not-super-attractive scissor gate doesn't do justice to the plaza or the business, that staff would actually be able to approve a more attractive one. But I would actually recommend that the commission does approve this particular gate without going too far with bringing in extra extraneous details. I have walked past that particular entrance numerous times and actually been tripped by one of the homeless people in that entranceway when I was with a child. I'm kind of getting it. But I do think that if we opt to approve this project, we should acknowledge that there will be others coming in the future and that we may need to address design standards for that area at some point in the future, and recommend that we do that.
Go ahead, Matt.
I just want to throw a further wrinkle into the operating hours conversation, which is that businesses close, right? And so you could have a business just completely close and then decide to close their gate sort of permanently until there's a new person leasing that area, or people go on a holiday for a week, and then, you know, you just have a closed gate. And so, you know, operating hours aren't always what they say they are.
Yeah, I think, I think any of us who have lived here understand the frustration of the homeless situation on the plaza, the unhoused people and the impacts on businesses. I absolutely get that. I think, to a certain extent, I share Dan's concern. I'm not so much concerned about the scissor gates themselves, but I think maybe what you're talking about is, at least what I imagine, is maybe it's Saturday morning on the plaza, and the farmer's market opens at 9 o'clock, people are starting to arrive at 8 o'clock to go to Brio for coffee, and that the gates being shut then feels like more of a problem to me visually than it does at the end of the business hours. And I'm not really sure if there's something we could specifically do about it, but that feels like more of a visual impact to the community and a direct impact on commerce in the way that you're describing. And I'm curious, and none of us may know the answer, but it seems to me, I totally get that that's hot property for crashing the night, but I wonder if the reverse is true, if the gates open at, you know, 9 o'clock in the morning or whatever time in the morning, if the store isn't open, I'm not sure if the same thing would happen, knowing that it's daytime and the business is going to be opening soon. It might present less of an incentive to sort of camp in that space than it does at the end of business hours. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, that's exactly the circumstance I was thinking about when I made my comment. I mean, the farmer's market at 9:00 on Saturday morning, it would be nice if the gate were open.
What you're saying is hours earlier than my opening time in order to open the gate. They don't open by themselves. Somebody has to open them. I open at a certain time in the morning because I have determined that that is the time when business begins. Occasionally, we get there at 10:30 on a Saturday morning because someone wants to get there early, and if somebody wants to come in at 10:30, but the gate doesn't open by itself, so you're saying that I have to extend my working day so that the gate can be open?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
How would you feel if you were a business in your building or another, somewhere around the plaza, and there were scissor gates on both sides of you, and you were open every Saturday, and they stopped opening on Saturdays, and maybe they weren't even open on Fridays anymore, and their gates were always closed? And sometimes maybe some trash got thrown over the gates, and it just kind of hung out there for a few days while you were opening, and people were walking by that? I mean, would that present itself as an issue or a concern to you? Because we're trying to look at the larger context of where this is going.
I don't think so. A gate, a closed gate says to the passerby, this business isn't open yet. I am happy to put my business hours in a larger and more prominent place so that you can say, oh, well, it's 10 o'clock, they'll be open at 11:00, I'll come back then. That's what people do. In the morning, for instance, on Saturday morning during farmer's market, people are intent on going and getting their vegetables and their fruits and having their coffee, and, believe me, they don't shop. They're not looking for stores to be open that early, they're busy on the plaza. The same is true when there are events on the plaza, they're busy going to the party, they are not coming to the stores. I know, I've tracked it. Is it worth it to be open longer hours during Ferry Festival or even during Oyster Festival? 10,000 people on the plaza. We shorten our hours because by 3:00 o'clock, they're all too drunk to allow into the store. Is our business greater because there are 10,000 people on the plaza? No. Business is no better on Oyster Festival Saturday than it is on any other Saturday.
Yeah.
This is how life works.
Yeah, we recognize that, we understand that, and I don't think anyone's suggesting that your business hours should change. I think the general consensus, if I'm listening to other commissioners, is about the visual impact on the plaza community of closed gates when people are doing other business on the plaza, and I'm just trying to think if there's a way that you could have the gates such that it prevents people from spending the night there and captures the bulk of the problem by doing that, but is also perhaps open earlier. I understand that, I understand it's, there's challenges there, logistically, who does it, how does that work? I'm just trying to talk about ways that we could make this project work.
Well, the whole point of the gate is to keep people from sleeping there, and...
We get that, we get that.
That's the idea, to keep them from sleeping, pooping, peeing, vomiting, spitting, all of those things.
We get that. The gates add a different atmosphere to the plaza, and that's our concern. It's a design review concern, that's our charge.
Right, and I understand that part of the problem, but it's not my responsibility to house the homeless.
And that's not what we're talking about, either.
I know, I know you have a visual impact, but the visual impact of campers in doorways and vomit on the sidewalks is worse than any gate.
I totally get that, and I think what we're saying is, if you had the gates, which prevented people from spending the night and therefore prevented all the associated ills that go along with people spending the night, but if those gates didn't have to close, stay closed so late in the day, then you would get the benefit of preventing the camping overnight and minimize the visual impact during the day. I think that's what we're wrestling with, from a design review and a visual impact sort of perspective.
Yeah, and we're trying to imagine where this is going to, and we're sympathetic to your problem, really. I think this is going to be approved when all is said and done, but this isn't going to be the last gate on the plaza. If your gate is approved, there will be others, and suddenly the plaza will look a little like New York City with gates... And suddenly, the plaza will look a little like New York City with gates everywhere. And we're, we're trying to imagine where this is going if we make this decision now.
Well, I think that you all have to speak to the rest of the members of the city government and encourage them to address this problem in a more effective way. Hand wringing is not going to solve it. Thank you.
Comment is closed, yes, it is. Do any other commissioners have any input on this conversation? Go ahead, Judith.
Yeah, and, and my sense is that we're all concerned not so much about this one particular gate proposal, but if all of the neighbors put up gates as well. I know the one thing that some areas have done where they're all so concerned about the aesthetics and the invitingness and highlighting, you know, a historic district that we all want to see is, once the majority of businesses all have gates up, the business association hires someone to come and unlock the gates of all those businesses. They're not unlocking the front doors of the businesses, they're just opening the gates. And that only obviously is one among many possibilities that becomes feasible when gates become more pervasive. But that plus if gates become more pervasive, design standards in the future is, is a solution that I think we, we might anticipate. In this particular case, you know, we have a present and fairly longstanding problem and we have a solution before us. And I think that if that solution is repeated in other places, then it's our responsibility to address the design and aesthetic implications of this much broader problem. And I think we should do that, but we shouldn't wait until we have done that in order to address the problems that one business, one set of workers are dealing with right now.
Thanks, Judith. Abby?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Is this permit, if we issued this permit, would it be in perpetuity or is there a renewal required? Because maybe we permit this today and then we decide that all of these gates, if, should more come before us, aren't, aren't the right look for the plaza or we find another solution? Like, is there the potential for coming back for a renewal or no?
Our land use permits are typically issued indefinitely. The commission could put a time limit on it that you have, you know, a second review. You know, there's nothing saying you couldn't do that. The applicant is considering, you know, a considerable investment. My understanding from discussions with the property owner is that, you know, they are not getting the bottom of the barrel fence. They're, they're actually spending some, you know, additional capital to ensure that the, you know, the fence is, you know, a nicer, nicer fence. And so, you know, I, I think that, you know, I would certainly ask them, you know, for their input before leveling that kind of condition of having a review. But I do think it's important, the, you know, the applicant brought it up, staff has brought it up, and, and I think commissioners have brought up the idea that, you know, this is not a permanent feature on the building. It's something that can be easily removed and so certainly you can consider that.
Go ahead, Dan.
I just want to throw out to the commission to ponder, and staff can respond if they want to, about a condition that would be something like, and it fits this application well, that it will be open seven days a week during normal business hours. That fits the model of Caravan of Dreams, from what I understand. If we get another application and they're only a three-day-a-week thing, I feel like it's just a different topic. Or if they're a nighttime-only bar, which, and they might not even open till five in the afternoon. So this gate's there till five with all of the repercussions of it. I mean, aesthetic repercussions. So, anyway, I, you know, where are we at? Let's figure out a condition and, you know, get towards a motion.
Judith suggested that we, you know, that the commission at some later point maybe take this up as something to consider in, in a proactive way to think about the potential for other, other alcoves, other gates. If in the future we came up with a set of codes that would communicate how these solutions would be acceptable, would that set of guidelines apply retroactively to gates that were already in existence?
You know, again, typically not. Typically, the approval is given for the conditions that are, you know, presented in the, in the approval process. And then those conditions that are no longer, you know, no longer comport with those new standards would be considered existing non-conforming. If it was an important enough feature that you think you're going to want to return to, again, I would encourage you to check in with the applicant, but it seems reasonable to suggest that the, you know, that if, if future standards are adopted, that there would be, you know, a review to see, you know, whether those, the existing gate needs to be brought in conformance. Again, I feel like for, you know, the commission to approve this and then completely, you know, if, if there was a complete change in direction in the future and they had to, you know, for instance, purchase an entirely new gate in order to come, come into compliance, you know, I would caution you making that sort of decision. But, you know, certainly if there were minor modifications or, you know, if there was something about, you know, the design standards that you have in mind that you might find acceptable, you know, setting the fence back from the property line a few inches so that it's, you know, less intrusive to the facade, for example, you know, or some other condition that you wanted to place on this that you might see yourselves contemplating for, you know, future design standards, which, by the way, staff fully supports. You know, I, I would suggest that you contemplate those now.
Can I ask another question? Have you, any of you considered an automatic gate, a motorized gate, that you could remotely open and close? I mean, I, I have no idea what the market is, but I have seen motorized gates and that would solve your problem. I mean, you could push a button and have the gate open or close.
Well, yes, I've looked into many, many options and different designs from ironwork to roll-up gates, but you know, there's something mathematically wrong with like trying to put gates that are iron gates or something in there where they, they mess with the swing of the door swings out, starts to get into these ADA issues, the American Disabled Act problems and things like that, the two different, the width and the depth. The width is more like 12 foot four and the depth's a little less than six. So that, so some kind of swing gates don't work, they interfere with the door, which would encroach on the entry to the door, which would not meet ADA access. And then your idea about the roll-down, yes, I've looked into that too. Would they, you know, do they have them that you could operate them from your telephone or something? I can't tell you that. I didn't look into something like that. But if it still had a button, a button is a human still going there to open it. So it's a similar thing. I said, there's, we don't know if you can operate them with a phone or not. And then it starts to get very, very expensive. And then there's other design elements. You have this big box that would be up there that needs to be covered or somehow architecturally look right to, probably for you guys, you know? That becomes another design issue, I believe, in my opinion.
I think I'm ready to call the, go ahead, Judith.
I just had another thought in response to Dan's point about the opening hours, that the neat thing about design review is that we do do it on a case-by-case basis and you could easily make a case, if something like this comes up in the future, for a business that isn't open every day, that it's a different situation. And we could opt to make a different decision in that design review than we are in this because the situation would be materially different. And so I, I think that, you know, if, if we're hesitating because we're envisioning, you know, of a domino effect of all of a sudden within the next year, everyone downtown's going to have a gate, that, that is going to be up to us and we can, we do have the responsibility to address the individual conditions of each design review we do. And that's why we do design review on a case-by-case basis.
Go ahead.
I just want to agree with what Judith said, and it's the cumulative impact of all of these gates on the plaza. And right now, I can't say that we have one. This would be the first and the only. And I personally feel like I could survive with approving this gate. I'd like to know how effective it is and I would also stray away from a condition of it must be open from this time to this time, seven days a week, because holidays are holidays. And then we are putting it on staff to understand, well, what days are technically a holiday where this gate can be shut all day? And it's a little too much. So that's all I have to say for now, and I think Dan has finished.
I already said this, but operating hours change. And I, I think it's a little bit weird to approve a design review based off of something as ephemeral as operating hours. And so I just, I think we can all tell ourselves, oh, like this business is open seven days a week and it always will be, but I, I just, I don't think that that's how this will work. And then I don't think that's how it'll work for other businesses, right? Like the one that's currently only open at nights might change or, or whatever. And so I, I wish that was, that would be a very clean solution, but I just don't think it's realistic.
The thing that would make it realistic is that it goes with the property. Businesses do come and go, but the gates would stay. And the property owner owns the gate and whoever moves in. If there is a condition, I'm not suggesting I have the exact condition, but if there is one, it goes with the property. And if you want to close the gate, you've got to figure it out. I don't know. This is the challenge. I just, I, I still stick to that I'm a little uncomfortable with if the next applicant is a four-day-a-weeker or a bar that doesn't open till five. I don't want to look at gates all day on Saturday. I get people are just going to the market and there are, you know, vegetables or whatever, but if three stores in a row happen to be all gated till five or, or, you know, on weekend or three days a week, or I don't know, it just, it starts to change the feeling of the plaza and that's what we have to pay attention to.
Yeah, I think I, I understand Judith's point that if there are future gates, we're going to have a chance to consider those like we're considering this one so that this is not an automatic pass on every business that has an alcove. I feel like everyone's had a chance to express concerns, ask questions. Is anyone ready to make a motion on this item?
I'd move to approve the project.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all vote in favor.
I'm a nay.
I'm sorry, was that a no or abstention? No.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate, appreciate everyone's dialogue and communication around that. I'm sure we'll be talking more about this. Joel, welcome back. We're moving on now to our business items this evening. We have one business item tonight, which is to consider, consider outstanding general plan recommendations. Can we begin, please, with a staff report?
Yeah, I will keep my comments brief. We're sort of in the mode of finalizing recommendations on the general plan and so these are, these staff reports are becoming somewhat routine. The, one thing I will say, in addition to the material that we'll be covering today is that, did want to provide notice to the public again that the draft EIR for the general plan updates, Gateway Area Plan and Form Based Code, is available on our website and it's under public review currently. In the staff report, there's information on how to sign up for notifications and to send your comments to us on that, on that EIR. Having said that, I'll jump into the content. We have attached to your staff report, attachment A, which is the planning commissioner comments that were received, identifying proposed changes to several general plan policies that have been recommended previously by the planning commission. I would put these into two categories. There's several policies that I would suggest that the planning commission has either already, you know, had lengthy discussions about the policies or staff would not recommend the changes that are proposed or the, the changes are de minimis and, and non-substantive. And so for those and a variety of other reasons, staff is not recommending that the planning commission take, take those on. There are a couple policies, fewer number of policies that were recommended in this packet that I'll list out for you and, and happy to repeat, that, you know, if the commission wants to take them on, that we would suggest that those, you know, those changes, there's something to discuss there. This is just the staff recommendation. I suggest the planning commission go through its own process to identify which they're interested in, in, you know, addressing of the, the changes that came forward. And I would suggest that you may do that through some of the, you know, quick polling that you've done in the past where you try and see, is there a majority of you that wish to discuss those? Having said that, the policies that, you know, staff has evaluated and says, you know, look, there's something there, you, if you want to discuss them, you know, we, we would support these conversations. Include from Commissioner Lehman's list, the first one, D1M. From Commissioner Mayer's list, there was cite, the objective LU1 was cited, policies LU1AA, LU3B, CM4B, CM5C, and D1A, and we have comments to those. If you do open any of these topics, staff has evaluated each of the proposals that's been made and we can offer a recommendation if the planning commission is interested. But again, in order to, you know, to address a process that's both efficient and, you know, recognizes the, the commission's time and the public's time, I would suggest that you take those up in, in a decision that, a decision process that identifies whether or not you want to discuss them first. Last thing I will offer is that in attachment B, we have the public comment that we received prior to distribution of the packet. And then attachment C includes the updated table of the general plan comments that have been received from a variety of sources. And we can, we can pull up that list if you want to get into any of those decisions as well, recognizing it's, you know, seven o'clock. I want to stop there and then leave it to any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that staff report, David. It does sound like we have several items enclosed that we may have covered previously in our recommendations and discussions. I understand from the staff report that staff has evaluated and provided comments on items to both Commissioner Lehman, Peter, and Judith's submissions. There are several policies staff recommends reconsidering and there are several that staff believes have been discussed previously by the commission. So I want to start this evening with this business item by grouping policies to determine if there is interest amongst the commission in discussing them. And I would like to start with the policies recommended for reconsideration. And I would like to start with the policies recommended for reconsideration. And I would like to see a show of hands for those commissioners who...
Excuse me, before we start showing hands, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for commission members to ask questions, or explain an orientation?
I mean, we, my preference is to just check in and see, I don't want to open a discussion without checking in with the rest of the commission, and seeing if everyone wants to go into this discussion.
What I'd like to do is explain an opportunity to cut the discussion short while allowing for people who've made recommendations to explain them.
I think, I'd still like to check in first with the commission to see if we want to entertain this discussion before, before we do there, because I think otherwise it can take a lot of time. So as I was, as I was saying, I would like to see a show of hands for commissioners who do not wish to reconsider the policies that staff has identified as being available and recommended, rather, for reconsideration. Do not want to discuss these policies.
Yeah, I accept the staff recommendation.
So you do not want to. Dan?
Yeah, I, sorry, I just need a little bit more clarity here. I didn't follow all of this.
Basically, there's two...
The staff is suggesting that the list that they have not given comments in response to is, are items that we've previously discussed rather thoroughly.
Correct.
Okay, and you're just trying to separate that out, and say, let's tackle the ones that have comments, because they are a little more pregnant to the situation now. We haven't...
What I'm trying to do is check in with the commission as a whole about both groups of policies. And in starting with the group of policies that staff has recommended for reconsideration, I'm looking for a show of hands for commissioners that do not want to discuss those policies that staff has recommended for reconsideration.
I'm missing yours.
Did everyone catch that? Not seeing a show of hands?
Say it one more time.
So what I'm saying is, if you don't want to discuss the policies that staff has recommended for consideration, raise your hand. And I'm not seeing any, I'm assuming we want to, as a group, discuss those. So at this point, I would like to then hear items that are on that list from Judith and Peter, and a brief explanation or introduction of your sort of elevator pitch for these. And we have staff comments for these as well. Go ahead, Judith.
Okay, what, what I would like to say is, I submitted a very long list. This is actually pared down from the list of editing suggestions that I had submitted to David earlier, many of which he agreed to, agreed that they weren't substantive, and that those changes would be made. This list includes a subset of 15 items that I believe are substantive, and that I would believe it would be unwise to not discuss. And then there are some recommendations for clarification that I'm not sure actually require any commission action. They would change language or formatting in the plan. But some of them were things that staff had not recommended, and so I kept them on this list. But I look, I would like to have an opportunity to speak, at least to those items that I've identified as substantive and crucial, some of which we haven't actually made decisions on. But they go beyond the list that...
Well, right, right now, I'm, what we're looking at is the LU1, LU1AA, LU3B, CM4B, CM5C, and D1A. So I want to keep our discussion now to those, because that, those are the items that the commission just said they wanted to discuss. And then after that, we will have a show of hands and see how much further we want to go. So if you could give us a quick highlight of those items, then I will pass it over to Peter for his item.
Okay, I, I think maybe it would make sense to deal with the D1M, which was Peter's item, and also on David's list, as well as on my list. And so maybe we could start with that one, rather than my longer list.
Okay, sure. Would you like to go first, Peter, and take us through D1M?
Sure. This is pretty simple, I think. This policy calls for dark sky policy to have precedence over crime prevention through environmental design. And I think crime prevention and public safety are much more important than dark sky. So I think it should be the other way around. I think crime prevention through environmental design should have precedence.
Starting with you, Matt.
Can I just ask staff if there's really even a conflict here? My understanding is dark sky policy is about pointing lights downward. You could still have lights, they just have to not, like, the old-timey lights that had no covering and went up into the sky. And so as long as you still have lights pointing downwards, you can have a dark sky and crime prevention. And so I'm just, I'm trying to understand if there's really even a conflict here.
I think that they're largely compatible with one another, and I think that the planning commission wanted to, when you made this recommendation, to ensure that the dark skies were prioritized over SEP TED, if there was a SEP TED policy that allowed for, you know, a non-dark sky policy. And so I think that's really what's at question here, is, does the commission want to reverse that decision?
Excuse me, I don't think it would require reversing it. I'm sorry, I did, this was on my list as well. I have some suggested language that I think would resolve the issue pretty quickly. One of the things that the particular standards for the crime prevention through environmental design format tends to recommend is, you get the biggest bang for your lighting buck. You make your lighting poles higher than a typical dark skies policy would require them. You use more reflective types of lighting to get into corners where people would be lurking. You might use brighter lights, and you might light places just to get rid of places that are unlit. Those standards typically are formulated to be the most cost-effective for the lighter, regardless of opportunities to reduce their impacts on dark skies. They are typically developed for large urban applications. Oscar Newman, who's, who sort of is the father of these standards, was really looking at making large public housing projects safer, and wasn't really thinking of the types of situations that we're encountering in Arcata. The language that I've proposed, I think, would satisfy Peter's suggestion, and, and also respect the dark skies purpose. It's on page 44 of your packet, under D1M. Where Arcata's dark skies standards appear to conflict with crime prevention through environmental design standards, site-specific analysis shall determine appropriate lighting. And I think staff could probably make that call. But to, to adopt a, a kind of almost copyrighted set of standards into our code, standards that were not developed for Arcata's types of lighting situations and challenges, you know, you're going to end up with parking areas with, with tall lights, floodlighting, lit-up pathways that will prevent us from sleeping with our curtains open.
Commissioner Mayer, pardon me, wouldn't those violate the dark sky standards that still are in the code?
Yes, but what I'm, what I'm seeing is that in this case, you might have a conflict of two sets of standards. And I'm presenting a suggestion for how to resolve that conflict.
Abby, I know you had something to share.
Yeah, I've written a lot of development permits, and many of them had a condition that the projects adhere to dark sky standards. And that's for a reason, because we have, we deal with light pollution. And I don't think we should be pinning crime prevention versus protecting our, well, our physical environment, and our enjoying the plaza without it being overlit, or any side street, for that matter, but also habitats, local habitats that rely on darker skies. So I personally would like to know if a majority of us would like to, if we can move on, or if we want to stay with D1M, but I am not supportive of changing that language.
You know, if you want a dark sky, go out of the city. Within the city of Arcata, public safety should supersede dark sky. I'm sorry. I'm an astronomy buff, and if I want to see a comet or a planet, I'll go up on Fickle Hill, or go out east, where there isn't any light pollution. I mean, public safety is more important than a dark sky, sorry. In the city of Arcata, in the city limits.
Go ahead, Judith.
I, I'd like to bring your attention to the specific language that I had suggested, which is kind of a compromise. It allows us to consider the specific circumstances of a particular development. The dark sky policies aren't just to go see stars, they're to protect habitats of urban birds, they're to protect the quality of life of people who don't necessarily want, you know, parking floodlights coming into their own windows. And I think that language that I suggested would actually do that. I'm wondering if you could take a look on your packet, page 44, and consider that change, which I, I think provides an opportunity to protect public safety, to have site-specific conditions, and to remind developers that they need to protect public safety, and to respect our dark skies requirements in the city, and to avoid a situation where staff has to make that call.
Joel?
Yeah, I think we have two competing policies, which appear to be equally valid. And I think Judith's compromised language is worthy of King Solomon, and I think I would support it.
Is anyone opposed to the proposed language from Judith to resolve this issue?
Just clarify that staff would make that decision, and it wouldn't require any sort of us.
The language, as it's currently written, is pretty explicit. It gives pretty good direction as to how to balance when there's a conflict. I'm not sure, I mean, I think that this language that is proposed here, you know, certainly gives the feeling that you're able to take site-specific consideration when making that decision. But the, because there's no way to determine which specific criteria in any given situation would lean more towards dark sky, and which criteria would lean more towards SEP TED, and, you know, result in, you know, off-site impacts to, you know, neighbors, birds, et cetera. I think that the compromised language feels like you've navigated a, you know, situation that you've really just created more situations, just on the project-by-project level basis. I think if the, if the commission, and ultimately the council, feels that, I mean, I think to Commissioner Yodowit's point, you have two equally valid, competing public goods that you're prioritizing here. Previously, the planning commission said, we want to prioritize dark skies. And, you know, ultimately, the, the city council has been, you know, supportive of that. And if you wish to change that decision, and support, you know, public safety through, specifically through SEP TED lighting design, there are other SEP TED elements that could, you know, address some of these public safety concerns. But if you wanted to go that one step further, and say specifically with regard to lighting standards in SEP TED, you want those to supersede the policies of dark sky when making these decisions, then I think you should change the policy to state that. Splitting the middle ground and saying that, you know, it'll be determined on a site-by-site basis, doesn't really give us, at the staff level, much to go on as to when to make those decisions. And, you know, I think that, that when we have a, you know, when we have a standard at the staff level, or a good understanding from desired guidelines at the staff level, I believe that, you know, staff can implement those, you know, fairly well, without, you know, additional oversight. When it comes to the type of discretionary decisions that have to be made to balance these two very important, competing public goods, that needs to be done at a, you know, planning commission, or at the very least, at a zoning administrator hearing level.
Got it. So I think really fundamentally, that language isn't going to help the way we might think it does. I think we need to decide whether we're comfortable with the language as it is, or whether we want to change the priority, as Peter suggested.
Let me just point out, I, I'm not in favor of floodlighting the whole city. All I'm saying is that public safety should supersede dark sky policy in the city of Arcata.
I think we all get that. Judith?
One of the things about the dark sky policies and Arcata's lighting standards is that they actually do take public safety into account. They don't say no lighting. They're very specific about the type of lighting that's going to protect public safety while not driving the birds out of Arcata. And I think that when Arcata adopted our dark skies policy, we were very cognizant of the need for lighting, and the need for public safety. And that our, our standards actually do take that into account. I suggested that compromised language, because, you know, I, I think the suggestion Peter made is an important consideration. But when you come down to it, I think that Arcata's policies go a very long way toward protecting pub, public safety through good lighting.
I'm, I'm mindful that we are still talking about the first item on a long list of things here, and I want this conversation to wrap up. So I want to hear people tell me whether they want to keep the language as it is, or make a change and prioritize public safety. Abby?
Keep the language as it is, please.
Matt?
Keep the language.
Judith?
Keep the language.
Joel?
Keep the language.
Peter?
Change the language.
Dan?
Does it matter?
It matters.
Keep the language.
Keep the language. Okay, thank you. Peter, everyone, I appreciate that. Let's try to keep these conversations going. There's a tendency to get bogged down, and I want us to keep in mind that we're sometimes making, spending a lot of time on decisions that don't really actually shift things as much as if you get lost in the individual item, you can think it does, so...
Chair, can we bring back the, like, two-minute pitch, and then we all vote, like, first? Like, a, as a system, do we work through these?
The 45-second pitch, and then the response. So I would like, I would like that, yes. So as we're, as we're now moving into the rest of these, I want us, people, we've had a chance to look at these, let's have a brief introduction... Let's have a brief introduction and then let's try to make a group decision concisely about whether we want to adopt or not. Fire away, Judith.
I think we need to hear David's list because I think we had agreed that we would address those first.
Okay.
LU1.
The L, the list is LU1, LU1AA, LU3B, CM4B, CM5C, and D1A.
Okay, maybe as we go along, since I still haven't written all those down, David could...
Maybe we could just start with L...
The objective LU1 is the first one.
Let's start with LU1.
Okay, LU1 objective. In that objective, there's, in a lot of the language of the plan, there's a lot of switching between the word amenity and other words. But in this case, it's a small matter, but I believe clean air is a right, not an amenity. I also think that it's important to have a clear definition of what we mean by amenity in a glossary. We haven't seen a glossary yet. And I would just hope that staff would come up with that definition. But clearly, amenity is probably not how we should consider that objective in the wording.
Okay. Matt?
If that was a motion, I would second it. Clean air is a right and not an amenity. Does that sound good to people?
Does anyone oppose to clean air being a right and not an amenity?
Agree.
Okay. Adopted. Can you pull that up on the screen for us, please?
And that's on packet page 39. Incentivize mixed use as a community amenity. There's a lot of language in that draft policy that ties us in knots. And I think that if we change the wording to simply create incentives to mixed compatible uses, we would cut through some of that confusion and some of that problematic language while making the point that we really want to make. So simply changing that wording to create incentives to mixed compatible uses and dropping some of that problematic language.
Okay, thanks, Judith. Did you want to say something, David?
Just real quickly, this was the one community benefit policy that was moved out of the D8 category, Design 8 category, that was created for the purpose of collecting all the community benefits program-type policies. And it landed here, and I think it landed a little rough. And so staff would also like you to consider moving that back into the D8 group of policies so it's clear. I think it clarifies the confusion simply by moving it back into D8. So either changing some of the language so that it's maybe a little clearer or, or maybe and/or moving this policy back into D8.
Does anyone support this language change to clarify this specific element piece? Change or not?
Does staff care about the change? Is that not working any way with, even if we do move it to D8 as a separate topic?
I think the concern here again is conflating the terms amenity and community benefit. This is really attempting to identify a community benefit. It's part of the community benefit program.
So staff's preference is to move it back?
I'm just, you know, if we're going to take a second bite at the apple, I made this point before, you all overruled it and moved it into the land use element because it's more of a land use policy. It's the only community benefit policy that is not in D8. So I'm suggesting that you do what Commissioner Mayor's recommending, change the word amenity to community benefit so that it doesn't conflate with other areas where we use the word amenity.
Copy.
And then also consider moving it back into D8.
Well, as the proposal is to change that wording for clarification to community benefit, is anyone opposed to that? Okay. So changed. Let's pull up LU3B, please.
Do we not at this point want to discuss moving it back into D8?
Not if we don't have to.
Okay.
Was that LU3B?
LU3B.
D or B?
B as in boy.
Northtown.
This was a bit of confusion because since the other policies for equivalent areas in that part of the plan don't actually specify, it's a way of making this policy consistent with policies for other areas in terms of how they're expressed. And I just want to know from staff, does that mean that the city would not allow the state density bonus maximum to apply above 50 units per acre in Northtown?
So the city has no ability to prevent state law from being applied in, in terms of the density bonus. But we would suggest that you strike the language after opportunities at up to 50 units per acre because that statement actually conflicts with other policy that identifies within these commercial mixed-use zones to not have a maximum density and you use the development standards to limit the amount of development that could happen on those sites. Again, as you recall back to the conversations that we had around both the gateway and the commercial mixed-use areas, the concept here is that, you know, if the market is driving towards one-bedroom units, let them build one-bedroom units. If it's driving towards four-bedroom units, let them build four-bedroom units. Putting a density cap on these sites artificially constrains those, and you end up with weird situations like the Tea Gardens that has four ostensibly one-bedroom units, four one-bedroom, one-bathroom segments combined with a, you know, kitchen so that you have one unit that's basically four units. So our recommendation is to strike at up to 50 units per acre from LU3B.
So how would that read then in your recommended language?
It would read, "Northtown Commercial Mixed Use Area. The continuation of mixed commercial and residential uses in the Northtown area should be encouraged, including allowing redevelopment to maximize housing opportunities." And then there's a suite of other policies that help flesh out what that's intended to look like. And then your commercial mixed-use standards in the zoning ordinance actually limit the development there. It just would not limit it by the number of units. It would limit it by building height and, you know, floor-to-air ratio and all those other things that are included.
Is anyone opposed to the recommended staff language change? So, so adopted as recommended by staff. Can you please pull up CM4B for our consideration?
CM4B is on page 42 near the top.
Okay, that was a suggestion to try and untangle some of the language on traffic signals. The draft...
Sorry to interrupt, Judith. Joe, can you scroll up a little bit? CM4B is at the very bottom of this screen, and I can't see the whole item. That's better, thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Judith.
Okay, the draft language, and I'm not going to go through the whole section, but it says, "New traffic signals shall be provided only," and I'm deleting a little bit of detail there, "to relieve a demonstrated safety problem at an intersection based on documented collisions." This directly contradicts the Vision Zero approach that we've adopted, at least for the Gateway, which says you don't wait until collisions take place and people have been hurt to take precautions. I'm not necessarily asking you to go whole hog in favor of signalizing intersections that probably don't need it, but definitely to get rid of that language that says, "Based on documented collisions." It is not acceptable to wait until people have been hurt or killed to make changes, whether they're signals or not.
A brief staff position?
I talked to the city engineer about this, and he said that there are certain warrants that need to be met for different signalizations. One of the factors associated with that is collision record. But I totally agree with Commissioner Mayor, the way it's reflected in here is not only a little morbid, but maybe emphasizes the wrong, you know, features that we need to do to meet those warrants. So we support this, and I would suggest that you defer the specific language to consultation with the city engineer to make sure that we reflect what the accurate process is.
Any commissioners have an issue or a problem with that? So adopted per staff change language and compliance with city engineer. Can we move then to CM5C, please, which is just a couple further down?
Okay, so that was bike parking?
Correct.
Okay. The draft says the required number of bicycle parking spaces shall be calculated as a proportion of the number of users. How do we know what the number of users is? Would it, presumably the land use code would specify something about that. But I...
Let's hear what staff has to say about that. David, is there any?
Yeah, just super quickly. I mean, I think this is vague, the way it's currently worded. The specific standard could be tied to some of these other topics like square feet, number of units, number of residents. And I think it's a good point, in particular in the Gateway area, where you're attempting to incentivize alternative modes of traffic. Traffic, one of the things that we've talked about is building out these alternative mode infrastructures. One way to do that is to ensure that there's places to park bikes and et cetera. So staff's in support of either a change to this policy or just recognizing that when you get into the details of implementation, you're going to want to pay attention to, you know, what, how you operationalize number of users.
Does the Gateway Code, I can't remember, currently specify how that would be linked? I can't, I think that our default was in a residential complex, the number of units, but it doesn't say anything. No, it doesn't?
I'm going to need to, I'm going to need to look up the specifics on what the Gateway Code says. My recollection of the conversation you had, and I believe it was Commissioner Simmons, who suggested that we make the standard based on one bike parking space per unit. I have to, I have to double-check that and verify.
Is anyone objected to the clarification suggested in CM5C? Any objections? Okay. Chair? Go ahead, Matt.
Since we are on this item, Colin, in his comments, pointed out that bollards aren't typically a place you can park your bike, and I'm wondering if staff disagrees or not.
That you can park a bike on a bollard?
It currently says bicycle parking facilities include racks, lockers, and bollards. And I don't know that a bollard is a bicycle parking facility. And Colin pointed this out. I missed it.
Yeah, no, that totally escaped my attention. I think we should change that. Bollards are not parking.
Where are you, where are you finding that, Matt? Is it on the last page?
CM5C, it says bicycle parking facilities include racks, lockers, and bollards in the general plan draft.
Okay, we'll remove bollards and maybe add other types of bike parking, like, you know, locked, you know, structures for the purpose and et cetera.
So next is D1A. Next and last on this batch of suggested comments.
Okay, D1A. Okay, in the design element, I suggested renaming the whole section, Building and Site Characteristics. I think staff might have agreed with that because a lot of the stuff in there is not about buildings, it's about the sites. But then there were a few questions there as well. There's a lot of question about whether we are looking at a form-based code for multiple areas in the city or whether form-based standards would be developed, recognizing the unique features of each area where they will apply. And I don't know that the planning commission has resolved that or that we want to resolve that. Maybe the planning commission wants to leave that ambiguous.
Brief staff feedback?
Yeah, to the first point about changing the name, I think that makes sense. It's on packet page 43 at the bottom of the page. And in terms of the form-based code, I mean, I think that was a carryover from when we moved this policy from the Gateway, which was specifically addressing the form-based code associated with the Gateway. We can change the word "the" if it's confusing, but I think it's, you know, in its current context, it's the form-based code that's associated with whatever the areas that that building characteristics are being applied to. And that, yes, those form-based codes, the idea is that they're going to be identified within specific areas and go through a separate public process in those areas. There's not the intent just to be completely clear that we take the form-based code that was adopted for the Gateway and apply it anywhere outside of the Gateway.
Can we specify that in the language of this policy then to avoid confusion?
I don't think there is confusion. It doesn't, the, there's nothing about the Gateway or the form-based code associated with it that would infer. You have to do a lot of mental gymnastics to get to the point where you're inferring that those codes apply outside the Gateway area.
I agree. I think it makes sense to rename this section. And is everyone else okay with leaving the, with the understanding we're talking about the Gateway Code in the Gateway area? Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for your feedback on those items. And then before we go any further, I want to check in again. And I feel like I worded this in a clunky way last time, so I'm going to try once more. This time, I want us to be considering the group of policies that for a variety of reasons staff does not have staff recommendation for reconsideration. Can I, I would like to see a show of hands among commissioners who do not wish to consider these policies again.
Do we have that list?
It's everything else except the policies that we just discussed. So the question is, these policies do not have staff recommendation. These are all areas that we've talked about on a variety of occasions. Just checking in with the planning commission to see if we want to reopen this discussion once again or not. So I'm checking in with you guys. Open it back up or not?
Not.
Yeah, I'm not.
Two nots. Joel?
I would say, I would say no.
Abby's a no. Matt?
I agree with staff's recommendation.
Judith?
I say yes, and I think any opportunity to clarify the plan so that we have a better plan... plan going forward is something that we should take.
Got it, thank you. I appreciate that, although I do feel like we've been through this a lot. I agree with the not, so we will not be considering those items this evening. And so...
This is a disgraceful way of silencing a reasonable set of suggestions. I'm sorry to interrupt. But if anyone had even considered that there might be something worthwhile there, we are losing an opportunity to improve the plan by simply deciding not.
I understand your position and appreciate you sharing it, but I think agree to disagree on this one. Next, in our agenda this evening, we will have public comment. If anyone would like to speak, each speaker will have three minutes. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
Good evening, Fred Wise. I'm a bit at a loss for words, because I don't understand the process that you're going through. You made decisions without any public comment. We heard Commissioner Mayor, who had a long list. I took notes on her list. I think a lot of them are good suggestions. And it's a particularly sore point for me. I'm holding my hand, this is from March, 11 months ago, when you were talking about the land use element. This is 13 pages, I submitted 29 items. Not a single one was discussed. When I read these over today, there are four or five that are ridiculous, that I wouldn't submit if I did it today. There is about half of them you have incorporated over this last period of time. There's others that I still think belong in the general plan. They're small things, they're subtle things, but they're important things. In the case of, a lot of the stuff is very small, but to discard it entirely, to me, is completely negates the process of trying to make a better general plan. So, as I say, I'm kind of at a loss for words. We can disagree, we can agree to disagree. I don't have a problem with that. I'm not saying that I have to be right, or Commissioner Mayor has to be right, but these things, I think, need to be considered. You know, as I said, I made notes on Commissioner Mayor's comments. There's important things on here. This process whereby a majority determines that the suggestions of a single person are not regarded is not how things are supposed to work. It's essentially, it means that any single, or in the case, there could be two or three of you who agree on something, would get outvoted. It negates people's input. It could be anyone. So, I've been emphatic enough on that. I don't have anything specific to say, but here, you know, I said the policies that were discussed, how are they chosen? And when are you going to discuss the others? Well, we've answered that question. You're not planning on discussing the others. In terms of the question of, just the simple use of the words "the" form-based code, or as suggested, making it more clear, it's, I believe there is an implication that's a single, that there's a single form-based code. And I've talked to many people who also believe that, because of the word "the." It could be very easily changed. A lot of the things that Commissioner Mayor has suggested, or that I suggested back in 11 months ago, very simple things, but have a large impact. Just as a small point, the Gateway code talks about having one bicycle parking place per bedroom. And then, but the number of bicycle parking spaces for commercial use, I think, are inadequate, and maybe we'll get to that in the future. The idea also of making all the decisions before public comment is a little suspect, in my opinion. I think that it may be better for me to submit my comments in writing in advance of the meeting, than give you time to read it, rather than a public comment, because there's, to comment on everything that, from Commissioner Mayor's list, would take too much time, obviously. I thank you for what you're doing and what you're trying to do. I'm not against you as individuals or as a group, but this is not the right way to do things. We had the framework, that worked pretty well, but this is not that. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Fred.
I'm another one that's disappointed in this process, and I'd also say that, you know, even these environmental issues that were brought up with dark skies, it seems like you're quite caught up in the details, and you seem to miss the whole big picture of things. And from that standpoint, I'll bring up the sea level rise, Alderaan Lair's speech, where he brought up historical maps and shown exactly where you're developing is absolutely the worst possible place to put housing in the future, because it's going to be affected by sea level rise. So I'm just like shocked how you get into these little, small little details about the environment, and you miss the big picture, that you're big time making the worst decision. And I'll have to say that I, one of the few that brought this up in the scoping process too, and I brought it up with example of what happened in Japan, where it was a lot of, a lot of folks, just like yourself, trying to develop housing for people, and thought they were developing in a really safe spot, and it ended up in 2008, it was 18,000 people died because of the earthquake and tsunami. So these were questions that I brought up in the scoping period, you're not going to answer it. You know, it's kind of like, what is this 1,190-page EIR if it can't even answer the most important questions? That's one. Another one was the sound studies. I mean, laughable, 1997, you're going to really go down that route. Can't spend any money on that. Doesn't matter how many, how many years that I brought this up, that you're not in compliance. And how about, you finally get the 3D renderings. I thought you were all supportive of seven stories, and it looks like in the renderings, you got four stories that we're seeing. So I'm a little confused on your renderings, that you really can't get into perspective of what's happening when what you're seeing, after you spent all this money, isn't even what we're really actually going to get. And another shocking thing is, from the standpoint, you had the fire department here, January of, over a year ago, and basically, the last sentence they said to you was, "We cannot support anything over three stories, because even Sora Place was four stories, and we almost lost control of it two times with oven fires." So what has actually changed since then, when, here they are, our first responders, Arcade of Fire District, telling you not to go over three stories, and you just act like it's no problem at all? I'll have to remind you of what happened in Miami, from the collapse there, that, you know, they're starting to hold people a little bit more accountable in the future, if these people have been alive, you know, when they had that collapse. So if you guys are going to say, "Build at six stories," and something happens in the future, you might find yourself accountable.
Thanks for your comments. Have anyone waiting online to comment? David? Go ahead, P?
Hello, this is Patricia Kambianika, and I'm just, I don't know where to start. So are you really going to not further discuss any item that staff has decided should not be clarified, or is not important? So I just kind of wanted to say, really? I, I agree with Commissioner Mayor that this is just kind of disgraceful. I would take it even further and say that it's rather disgusting, and I'm not really surprised, considering how the rest of this whole process has gone. So I would really ask you guys to reconsider it. I think it doesn't, it's not going to look well. So I'm also slightly puzzled as to why Commissioner Yoderwitz felt compelled to recuse himself from the last Scizergate agenda item, reasons being that he lives within 500 feet of that plaza's business. But yet, he has never felt the need to recuse himself from Gateway area plan discussions, being that his home and business is well within 500 feet from the Gateway's boundaries. Commissioner Lehman's home is also well within 500 feet from that boundary. I've calculated it's roughly 250 feet from the Gateway boundary. Both council members, Steelman and Atkins Alizar, were required to recuse themselves from the Gateway discussions for that same issue, as well as other commissioner. Yeah, so anyways, I was going to say other commissioners, but other, so anyways, I'm also sure that some would say that the planning commissioners are not binding decisions, their decisions aren't binding, only suggestions, but Yoderwitz just set a precedent, and hypocrisy is rather blatant, and I don't think it appear, it gives a good appearance to the community. I'm just curious to hear your rationalizations on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other speakers waiting online?
We have no other online comments.
Okay, as always, thank you all for your comments. We appreciate your feedback. We will move on to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from planning commissioners this evening? Matt?
I almost brought this up earlier, but it didn't seem appropriate. There was a lot of discussion about the causes of homelessness earlier today. There is a book called Homelessness is a Housing Problem, that really, like, completely changed my viewpoint on this issue. I own a copy. Basically, it looks at statistically, all of the different things that people claim cause homelessness, and then it correlates them with the amount of homelessness in different cities around the country. And what it found was that the price of rent and the rental vacancy rate are the two highest correlated things with homeless counts. And so, just something to everyone to keep in mind, as we are dealing with the impacts of having a large unhoused population, is that it is a direct result of housing supply and rental costs.
Thank you for that. That is certainly what we are focused on, trying to create more housing. Any other commission members have comments? Do we have any correspondence from staff?
No.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.